We have an agenda, and on the agenda we kind of have a timeline on each thing that we're going to try to use. Probably won't have a little bell that goes off when right at that time and everything. And then following, we will allow public comment. Commissioners, premium pay on your... Is Dave coming? Just wanted to be here.
I would hope so.
He's got the paperwork.
He's got the paperwork?
Yes.
He said, "I got the email." Hold on. I got the email.
I just heard him.
He started coming in, yeah. He didn't think it was going to be this quick either.
We were so fast.
We were quick tonight. This is probably the shortest one we've had in years. Yeah, I think this is one of the council's shortest ones we've had in years.
About that much.
About that much. So we'll wait, says David has been spearheading this, this. We will go down through as if where the premium pay is the first one on the list.
Let me start off real quick.
Go ahead. Break the silence.
President Ray, can I jump in?
Sure.
Story. Grandma had a cookie jar at her house.
Okay.
And we went, all six of us kids went, we all wanted a cookie. We got there one day, Grandma opened the jar, and it was five cookies.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh, six kids. Grandma's wisdom, she took those cookies out and broke them in half. How many does that make?
Ten.
Ten. So she gave each kid half cookie left. How many?
Four.
Four halves.
Four halves.
In her wisdom, she gave all the kids half a cookie. We thought, wow, that's pretty smart. A few minutes later, my Uncle Raymond rolls in with four more kids. Guess how many cookies are left broken in half?
Four.
She had enough for everybody. My Uncle Chester and Ruth didn't show up that night with their three kids, or they would have gotten none. To me, this ARP money kind of looks like a cookie jar. You know, it's sitting up there, and it's only going to be a cookie jar for a while, and it's gone. So I think that we've tried to do the best we can to figure it out to make sure that it makes an impact on our whole county, on all the kids. And unfortunately...
You have to break it in two sometimes.
Sometimes we may not get it broken exactly where we need to break it.
That's good.
I think we've tried to make sure it works for us. Preacher story.
Thank you for sharing that. Premium pay is the first one on the ballot.
So Heather and I went through some examples of what other counties were doing. Made a couple little tweaks to who fit into Tier One employees, but figured those that were most out and about interfacing with folks. And not everyone, so is in the, when you add things up, some people work more hours per week or more hours per that timeframe. The timeframe was March through...
I used the window of payroll that actually was paid March through the end of July, which kind of mirrored the amount of time that the courthouse was kind of closed to the public.
That was 2020. Is that correct? Okay.
This is shut for 90 days.
Yeah.
Yeah, the courthouse actually did not, we were back meeting together and everything.
It was after 4th of July when we actually, and then we were back in for a while.
Without the public.
Without the public.
And so those are the number of days that you're, how many days is that just?
I took that by hours.
By hours.
So the individuals that worked 35-hour weeks were like 630, and then it was 720, something like that for the 40 hours.
35 hours a week was how much, was how many hours?
Six, 30, I think.
I think that sounds, somewhere in the 600s. And then for those that worked...
30, and those that worked 40 hours a week was 40 hours was the same amount or the same...
They will be paid the same hourly amount, but they'll be paid more hours.
Like the county had, you know, 40 hours a week.
They worked the 40-hour weeks.
Yes, yes. 911, I think.
They're listed in that group. I mean, I can give you the details, I figured for this we didn't need, because people start looking and saying...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I get paid, and I don't get paid yet.
I only have two questions. One, let me for a look at first, remaining officers. I thought officers. I thought, wait a minute, all our jail, Sheriff's Department staff, that's remaining offices.
Yeah, sorry.
No, no, it's okay.
Belt check didn't pick up.
It's okay. Yeah, I thought remaining officers, how are we designating some officers that take tier and then a different tier? And then I was just curious, not you on other jobs, it was more than I, I guess when I thought of the have-two jobs and even public interaction, is the highway ranking up, highway employees ranking up at Tier One, is that because they're kind of the have-two job?
They're out among the public, and I mean, we couldn't, you know, couldn't actually go around and follow them, when did you interact with them? But, I mean, the potential was there, that they were going to interact with folks out doing their job.
One thing I was going to ask is about a 911, because they're not a front-facing, like, I know they had to work during COVID just as I did. They're not facing like COVID crisis, you know?
Well, maybe not face-to-face, but they were facing COVID crises from people, and that's what we thought. They were interacting with those issues. Maybe not face-to-face, but...
I think they were actually down a little, several other times.
I'd heard calls were down, no, not just here, but I'd heard they were, I read that was kind of a trend nationwide, obviously fewer cars on the road, fewer accidents. I mean, you know, I'd be curious to see if their call volume actually was maybe a little less, but yeah, that was the only thing I thought of as well. I don't know, we should like that for under this.
Just as I had to be a month, too.
Yeah, yeah, everybody has to be a month, yeah.
And also all comments.
So are, how does, any other comments from the council on this particular one?
Everybody knows why their courthouse office is by themselves, right?
Yes, because they...
She was there by herself the whole time.
They are there, they never left, they never left that office, yeah. They were there recording and doing things, yes. And all the other are the remaining offices, and that's every place, that's every location, right? Paragons, every place. I mean, is that what you're talking about, everywhere there?
Yep. Heather, run payroll and saw who was working. We went through and tried to match up there.
And I think you will, that my thought was that you're going to have people that, you know, they're hired now, and they're not going to get the pay and everything. Now, my question is, how is this pay going to, is it going to go into their one paycheck at a time? I mean, in other words, is it going to be one check that way? Are they going to, or is it going to be stipulated for the rest of the year?
Plan to help, I think we need to do it in one pay, and I think we need to do it on an off-week pay, so that it's not included in their normal pay, so that it doesn't cause taxing issues for some of them. I don't want it to create a burden of any kind on some people. So it would just be a one-time payment, and it would be only the county employees that are still employed, and only the employees that were employed during that time period. And then there are some, like the jail, there are some employees that hired midway through. Obviously, theirs would be cut down to only the shifts that they actually covered during that time.
Say they're hired in May, so it becomes May to July.
Right, so it would just be May to July.
Through July, okay.
It will be payroll.
Yeah, it will be in payroll. There's been discussion about that. Some employees think that it would be best, we can't issue an amount like that to everyone without taxes deducted from it, that would be a nightmare if we did that. And then we would give them 1099s at the end of the year, and that would just create mass pain.
What does this do to like PERF and all that sort of stuff? Is it not included in that?
Well, since we will do a one payroll, we'll be able to exclude all deductions that they normally have, and we'll be able to exclude any retirement from calculating.
Okay. Because I'm sure that first question is some of them are going to ask, you know, oh, this would be help that or not for some of the sales.
Right.
So you set up safe, pay it up by CAA, and that's it?
They'll just have their normal...
Basic.
Basic payroll deductions. They will not have insurance taken out of this or anything like that.
Okay, so then at the end of the year, that will be added to their normal salary. Is that correct?
It'll be on their W-2, on their taxable wages.
Okay, anybody else comment on that?
And those hours were 720 for a 40-hour employee and 630 for a 35-hour.
So can I make a motion that we approve the premium pay?
I was going to say, we won't have a motion to approve it, but we have to have a motion that we, she can advertise it. That's what we need to do, because it has to be advertised, and so that we can vote on it at, in the June meeting. So, yeah, you can make the motion that we will, that we can, that she, you will need for her to advertise it to be voted on in the June meeting.
Okay, so move.
I have a second.
I have a second.
You're a second. All those in favor? Okay, so the premium pay. Okay. Revenue replacement.
On the back page, letter up.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yes.
I know, it's a strange way to person. Anyway, so for highway equipment, $500,000 for QMA, those equipment in buildings, probably buildings, but let's see how that goes. But that's kind of...
We're hoping, yeah.
Yep. Time line equipment, $100,000. I've listed something for the sheriff's office, it doesn't have to be that, that was just something they had mentioned, and I wanted to keep track of it, so, but $100,000 for...
I guess that would go a long way from their budget and stuff, if that was approved, you know, we'd have to use it that way.
They currently need new certified tasers, right?
We would end up with that funding off of it as purchase, an additional 20 tasers, that'll have a five-year contract, warranty, the cartridges, the training cartridges, all the stuff that goes with it. Because anything we put in on our request, all we're looking at a five-year logistical plan, like the vests have to be replaced within five years for the, so everything that we put down on our list had basically a five-year cycle life. We didn't want to just blow through it today, but it would have everything and help cover us for the next five years. It would be tasers, and then our second phase bulletproof vests.
And just moving forward, when these dollars are spent, you know, if this body gives that green line and suggested, you know, dollars allocated for use of this therapy money and $100,000 to the sheriff's department, in regards to holding departments accountable and/or knowing exactly how that money's spent, even though obviously the intent is exactly what Officer Taylor just described, you know, what type of documentation then and door reporting will we see in follow-up? You know, how loose is this, how strict does this need to be?
Is it like a grant cycle where you have to prove it?
Yeah, I would, we will have all the invoices.
And I'm not being picky, because we just happen to look at yours as an example, but it's a lot of money even in this one, you know, allocation.
I was going to say, with those type of things on it, dancer for those portions of it, we'll already have it, I mean, because we'll have the quote or bid aspect of it already ahead of time, and then we'll also the, once it goes through, the invoice to pay it and showing exactly when and where and how it was.
So I have a follow-up question for that. It's not anything that we need to provide to outside of, we are the ones that are to follow up with that. We don't have to do like a normal grant cycle, where we have to go in and provide that information to the state or to the...
Yeah, we will, to the federal government, we will.
Every year.
Right, we have to provide data, but we have, I think the same methods we use right now are the same methods we should stick with. I don't think we, we don't want to come in the door for other things, so we'll do it that way. That way, we'll have the documentation that we need to put in this report.
So you'll go back to the sheriff's department and say, hey, can you provide the invoices where you...
For extra, everything's kept in my office. When, any check that we cut, I have an invoice in my office.
Has you?
So, but I will get this information that when we receive ARPA claims to maybe make a copy and set to the side, and then I can scan them once a month to you guys when you guys have your meeting as well, so that you know where we're standing.
Perfect. Perfect.
That would be good. So you go ahead. All short, I think I think that's a lot to catch.
70,000 left inside, well, let's just use it to throw us down party.
No, you have a lot to catch.
No, I want to go universal.
So next was health department, cybersecurity improvements, that'll be the stuff that we're doing for the courthouse for...
We don't need that, that's a yes.
Yep, yep. So then there's an airport study, stormwater management study and plan. So this one is for the county stuff, the other stormwater management up above, and he is for the helping city in their study, and then some money set aside for matching grants.
Dave, I've had a lot of questions about JPG Airport. Can you elaborate on that, please?
Well, I mean, I don't know how much the study's going to cost, but the study is going to look at a variety of different potential uses, but I'm not in that field, so I don't know what, if these are, and we'll know some things early on that, okay, well, we can't go any further, but if we don't study this, we're not going to know. So can it be a maintenance hub for an airline? Can it be a cargo hauler airport? I mean, just his, I mean, it's going to be, it's more likely because of location, it's going to be a private field, it's not going to be an FFA, not the farmers, but the air traffic guys. And so that's an option. Right now, Purdue's pilot schools are full, and they cannot do anymore at West Lafayette, so is that another option? Is it having a pilot school in, at JPG? When we went to road school, they have vertical takeoff and landing crafts coming on the scene for cargo, and then we'll see down the road, they're talking about people, but is it something that could, that could be used for? My thought is, you've got UPS in for sales, they're trucking things in now, I think the guy said, I don't have any documentation, but they're purchasing a lot of these vertical takeoff and landing vehicles, are they planning to skip the roads and bring it from Louisville that way? I don't know. But we won't know until we do a study, and if we, you know, will that cover major improvements? No, it won't, but if we don't have a study, we're not going to get anybody to look at it as far as a major improvement.
And obviously, you've put some thought into this, and we've reached out to some different people to do some studies?
Yeah.
And who are those people?
So CMT, Crawford Millie, and I don't know what the T stands for, but they've done a lot of airport studies. I always know these initials. BFS does airport studies. Hanson, I don't know what Hanson's last name is. So there's three, and we put out a request for qualifications, so we haven't really laid out what the study is, we need to sit down and figure out what are, what are things that we can look at. So, you know, will all of it be spent on a, on a study? I mean, initially, probably not, but I don't know how much, if we hit, don't hit any hurdles, don't, you know, airspace, that's one that I've been told we really have to figure out. Is there airspace? If we don't have airspace, well, then the study probably stops pretty quickly.
Right.
But if it is there, and some of these other opportunities are available, I mean, you know, we've got, I think, an opportunity to include rail now, because it is right there on the, I mean, we have access to the river, we have some things that not many people are going to have, yeah, Butler Fairman, yeah, I guess they're, BFS, I don't know that last name. But, you know, so those are some things that we've, we've had some initial discussions with, like I said, the request for qualifications is out, we're supposed to get proposals back on the 20th of May. And once again, it's not going to really have a price in the study, per say, it's just going to say, all right, who's done these studies, who's looked, who's got the qualifications to do something like this?
So we've already thought about this, why, why wouldn't we consider our current airport for these types of services, or these maybe expansions or business opportunities?
I don't know, I haven't think. I mean, they pretty much told me, every time I talked to them about it, they said, we can't do that, you can't do that. Well, I don't know that we can't do that until we try to figure it out. You know, so I'm not, I'm not looking to take business away from the Madison Airport, I'm trying to find something else that, you know, I think another one I didn't even mention there, but someone might be, probably the military. Is there something in the military aspect that that could be, fit in with Muscatuck and Atterbury? I don't know, but it seems though wasteful just to let it deteriorate to nothing without at least looking.
And the acreage is there to handle the bigger planes, too, which is not the case out there.
We're not looking to bring people in and out just because we don't want to, you know, we're not going to build terminals and things like that, but we just want to see. And like I said, if we get into the study and they find out that the airspace is, is not going to happen, then there's really no sense in going forward.
Talked to one of the commissioners in Clark County and said, it was a shot in the dark, what a shot in the dark it is down there along 62 now. But, you know, you don't know.
Okay, if we approve, my question is, if we approve this in this plan and everything, can that amount of money and everything be changed at a later date?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so in other words, if we don't spend for that, can be changed, is that, is that your understanding, Heather, too?
Yes.
Okay.
I think they realize this is just a plan, it's not set in stone, so it's just, all right, try to break it up and spend it if we need to, we've got it, if not, we have other options for sure.
Is that, is the JPG airport, is it privately owned, or is it, is it part still? Is privately owned?
And he's interested, so.
And he's interested.
Yep, we've had, that was one of the first hurdles to overcome, if he's not interested, okay, then.
Okay, okay. I didn't know whether I had spoken with him or not, you know, anything there with it. So do you have any other questions on this, on that particular thing, and then you want, go ahead with the stormwater?
Should we go ahead and make a motion on this?
No, he's got two more items here, stormwater.
Well, so the stormwater management plan is basically just, as a county, we have no, and it's basically just documentation infrastructure, not really infrastructure or anything, but we, we have like three sentences in our ordinances about stormwater management. If someone wants to come in and develop, they could dump it wherever, and we're seeing aspects of that.
Within the county.
Right, so we thought, okay, probably a good idea to take some, get some of this infrastructure in place, we're not looking to go fix anything right now, there may be things that come out of this stormwater management plan that gives us the pathways to fix these things, you know, I mean, if, the terms are, you know, there's a regulated drain, if someone has a problem with, with, you know, if it's a ditch alongside the road, the highway department can deal with that, but if this is a creek that's running through someone's yard, or that someone else has developed a creek, and now dumping more water into it, and now this guy's yard is getting washed away, we have nothing, nothing to hold anybody accountable. Now, we can't go back down these people, but in the future, at least, we can set up some guidelines to do that. So that's what that's about.
Okay, and then matching grant funds, so we just want some money there to, so any funds that we might be able to get grants for or something?
Right, we always need some matching funds to have some set aside, just to, and I understand that's a lot of money, but I, for the airport study, but I'm, I mean, it has some very big potential, and I'd hate to get midway through and then like, well, we need to go further, well, we're out of funds.
You won't have $200,000 in the fund, and wouldn't have, wouldn't have enough money.
I think to me, what jumped out is the word "study" after it. I know that property has mega potential, but wrapping my head around, you know, the taxpayer, when, why are we proposing spending a half a million dollars to study and see if this county needs a second airport? Yet a lot of taxpayers balk and complain about feasibility studies in general, and they're so necessary and needed, that is a lot, a lot of money.
If you don't have, if you don't have a plan, I mean, I, even, you know, with the ready grants, we were, fortunately, that the RDA had a plan already in place, I'm sure a lot of regions didn't, and they were jumping through hoops trying to come up with a plan, and what happened? Well, this region got $50 million, and others didn't, so I think while it is expensive, once again, I don't know how much it is going to be, but if you, if it looks like something can happen economically there, we're going to need some help in fixing, fixing things. We, whoever, whoever's the owner, but I mean, we would like to help that along, but we're going to need some, a plan to get any sort of grant.
I don't know, I don't, I don't know if it's appropriate for me to speak, I happen to represent Jefferson County on the RDA, so I don't know, I have, this is not a public comment period, though, correct?
No.
Okay, I'll start out.
Okay. I was just going to comment, I don't think you are overshooting on the matching grant funds, I know the 250 seems like a lot there, but that's always such a frustration when you have available soft money that can really be a blessing to your community, and you can't go for it, so to speak, because you don't have those matching dollars, so I think that's wise to have that earmarked.
I'd like to maybe motion it to just table that one section, so we can get a little bit more information from you guys, and, but I would recommend to the rest of the revenue replacement to be moved forward.
You want to just table the JPG airport planning study?
So you're going to need to tell me what kind of information you want, because I'm not going to go searching for unknown things, so what kind of information are you?
I'd like information with, a discussion maybe with Mass and Airport, just to see if, what we can find out from that, I'd be happy to.
For what? What do you want to have a discussion? I had the discussion, they said, you guys, everything that I told them just there, you can't do that. We can't do that. So I'm not sure, and once again, I'm not trying to take business away from them. If it, if it came to a point where this study said, well, you can have a runway for private jets and stuff like that, we've got one of those, we don't need that.
Well, I met with them just two weeks ago, and they said they would be interested in discussing it, so...
So they've changed their mind?
So I met with Brett Spry.
And that's who I had the discussion with.
Yeah, I was, I was there when you had one of your discussions with him, I was standing off to the side at the helicopter when that presentation was there, so.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor and a second to eliminate the 500,000.
Not eliminate, table.
Table, the table that's 500,000. Okay. Do we have any other discussion before we...
So I want to know, so what has, what has he done to look at any of those?
I'm, I'm just saying that I think we need to just...
No, I mean...
Explore it.
Explore what?
Well, I mean, this is the, really, this is the, except when I talked to Lee, Ron Lee, this is really the first time that I'm getting any details from you guys.
I did, I told you, we did talk.
Yeah, we talked about it, but it's still, I'm not sure all the rest of the council members have that information, so.
Okay.
It's just like everybody have a chance to make a decision.
Is there any other discussion before we vote on just that particular, that we're going to table the 500,000?
Will we be advertising the rest?
Yes.
Okay, you're, okay, you want to amend, you're, you want to amend that, or you want to, let's do it separately.
Okay.
Okay.
Well separately do the, the five hundred thousand, that, to table the five hundred thousand. So it's been, I made a motion to table the five hundred thousand, which is the JPG airport planning study at this time. Any other discussion before we vote? Okay, all those?
A little more meat and detail there. Table until we'll hear.
Okay, table until what?
Is Ray asking commissioners for more detail for next month's meeting? My question for this needs to be advertised for next month's meeting. We're still okay to table that until next month?
Yeah, for more discussion.
If you're hopeful that we have more.
Is that what you're saying, to table it for a month?
Yes.
Table that amount for a month.
Okay, but you would not be able to vote on actively appropriating that money next month?
No.
You would just have further discussion next month?
It could be advertised at, at that point and go to the following month.
Right.
Yes, yes, that could be. Okay, so we need to vote on that. So all those in favor of tabling that for, for a month's time? The five hundred thousand, that was a JPG airport planning study.
I'm against it, so I'm not voting.
Two, two in, that's, okay, those are, that are in favor of tabling are those that are not in favor of tabling? So it's two to two, so if, if you two are not.
So I, I still feel like.
I motioned to strike it from the motion.
I still feel like we're a little unclear.
Okay. So.
I second it.
So we can table it.
We can table it or we can strike it.
I'll, I'll, I'll motion to table it.
Table it, okay, so that, so you motioned to table it completely, so, okay. So I'll, well, take the revote, so those that are in favor of tabling it at least for one month?
To your, to your details.
Satisfactory details, okay, so then, okay.
For thirty days.
Okay, for thirty days.
I'd love to hear some more details.
Okay, so that part is out. Now we can take a motion, if everything else is, is satisfactory to everyone here, we'll take a, a vote on that if I have a motion for the revenue replacement.
I'll make a motion for that.
Okay, for Gary, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Can Ray second it? Do I have any discussion on any of the others? Okay, for, for Heather to advertise the revenue replacement, everything, the part that has been tabled for the next month's meeting. All those in favor? Okay, I was hoping, I think we've got a buddy. Okay, so everything but that five hundred thousand. Okay, next is the water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure.
The numbers have changed a little bit because we got numbers of, we had this. So water companies had customers outside the county. And I figured we wanted to pay for those inside the county and kind of face it on that. So that's why the numbers have changed from what I originally sent. So, there's the, the listing. The, so, I mean, the water companies, projects for infrastructure, Hanover as requested. I'm not sure what the total was they asked, or it's not a hundred, it's more than a hundred thousand, but to put in.
Three sixty-four.
For the electronic water meters. Stormwater management, so that's the, helping the city in their study with the stormwater. And then, more than likely, I mean, the broadband plan and projects would be more for grant money so to get grants to put into the state is providing loads of money to, to do that.
So Madison would have a million dollars and Kent would be three seventy-five, am I looking at this right?
Yep.
DuPont, one hundred and sixty thousand, Canaan, one hundred and fifty thousand, Rikers Ridge, a hundred and thirty-five thousand, Hanover, a hundred thousand, Stormwater Management, two hundred and fifty thousand, and broadband plan and projects, a hundred and fifty thousand. Comments?
Are those, oh, go ahead. Are those amounts based on customer service?
Yes, and those customers in Jefferson County that are served.
Uh, can I ask about the broadband plan and projects? Can you give me some more detail on that?
Well, um, I mean, right now it's, it's, it's working. We've started some initial meetings with broadband providers to see why they haven't, they've started to step to the table, but they haven't, so we need to start those discussions. But the state and the federal government offering a bunch of money for getting broadband folks, I mean, we're, we're, it's probably, that's about where we're at, we haven't started, but we just wanna kind of earmark some funds for, for grant money to, to have matching funds for, for those.
So that's what this is?
Yeah, pretty much.
Good.
I don't, I don't think we have to do, there's enough, I think there's enough data on what, who has and who doesn't have broadband or who doesn't have internet in the county that, and I know they're doing that for free back there. So I don't think we need to pay for any, any of that, but.
That's being done, and then they're trying to find out how, how much speed and so forth.
Yep, yep.
All the speed and everything with, for the broadband and for everybody. They want everybody to take this, and it, it's now on the, on the website where you can go and, and hook into it and, and run your computer. And they're recommending, or we were recommending from our meetings, that you do that. Different times a day.
Yep.
Do it possibly in the morning, do it late at night, do it at different times so that they'll know whether you're, if it's going up or down or anything during the day.
When school's in session.
When school's in session, I notice mine's different than, than it is when it, when it's late at night. Yeah. So, yeah, I think that's what.
We've done the resolution where Jefferson County's a broadband-ready community.
Get-ready community.
Which opened a lot of doors. And we did have SCI data show interest.
And then Spectrum, we're supposed to have another five meetings. With Spectrum on the thirtieth first, they had to cancel the first one, but we will have another meeting with, on them. And they, they have, suppose have nine hundred and some more new customers or something that, that they're beginning money for to, but where they're gonna go and where they're gonna lay the lines and everything.
The east side of the county is pretty, the lines are pretty well laid out there, aren't they?
Yep, yeah, we got it now, don't we? We've got fiber dollars.
Yeah, my neighbor Ron, uh, guy, he's hooked up.
Yeah.
I've got my line, but I'm not hooked up.
Oh, yeah, they're coming.
R E M C, I'm R E M C, he's S E I.
Now, the problem, the problem a little bit there with the R E M C that we're finding that if you, a line goes by you and your electricity is not R E M C, they go right on by your house. They will not, they will not hook you up. That's what, one of the things that we're working on in, in the committee that I'm on.
I know.
The southeastern Indiana.
We're targeting a lot of the north part of Brooksburg.
Yes, yes, yes.
R E M C comes down in the north.
Comes down there.
SCI data.
So they're trying to do that also, so they're, they're just, it's, it's, it's not gonna happen overnight, but it's, it's gonna happen down the road to north, so we're hoping. And it's, and the other thing with Spectrum and so forth, we're out there close, like we are, and they're very, very close and.
But the west side of the county doesn't have, the west, yeah.
We only have satellite, internet available.
Exactly, out, out, Debbie, they're just, they're, they don't have much of anything, you know?
No, we have satellite available. Qsnet is the only thing we have available at our house. It's over a hundred dollars a month.
Yeah.
And you said this, this Hanover number is not accurate, is it? I just kept thinking of a number of users, Hanover, that compared to, comparatively to Rikers and Canaan. I thought surely that's not right.
So they, they had asked for funds for electric water meters. So they don't send someone else to read them, and so that was funding part of that.
Rikers Ridge didn't process, didn't say anything, drive by readings, they call it.
Especially for those meters that are hard to, to, you know?
It's in the middle of the chief pasture.
I have, I have one of those, that is hard to get to. Did you have a question, Gary?
So the rural water has a new plan?
Rural water, I just mentioned.
Well, before, the numbers that I had for customers was, was customers inside Jefferson County and outside Jefferson County. And now we've got numbers for just the customers in Jefferson County. So, that's why the numbers have changed.
But I get DuPont, that's a resum that would be outside of Jefferson County.
One to Jennings County and Canaan.
Can, could be also, the same way would be outside the county, I don't think, I don't know.
Well, I appreciate your ability to move some things around. But I would still like the latest on the table for the June meeting. I'm gonna make that motion.
You wanna move to table the whole thing?
No, not the stormwater management and broadband plans. Just the amounts, actually the Hanover, I'm not having a problem with that. And Kent, I'm okay with that. But everything else, DuPont, Canaan, Rikers Ridge, and Madison, I'd like to lay that on the table, make the motion to lay it on the table till the June meeting.
So you're just wanting to put.
Or are you opposed to them?
Well, I don't, I don't know the rule plan completely. I've heard them, so.
What do you mean, rule plan? You've lost me.
Okay, well, I'm hearing that there's a new rule plan. That's, that's just. That's conjecture, I don't know if that's true.
Rumor control.
Rumor control, okay.
I mean, I can speak for Rikers Ridge Water Company. I don't know what real plan you're talking about.
Okay, well.
We've got eight hundred and thirty customers that the board's trying to maintain and take care of.
Okay, well, I still wanna lay that on the table. Make the motion, if it's not second, it's not second. If we don't get the vote, we don't get the vote.
So you want them all or just, just the Hanover, Rikers Ridge, Canaan, DuPont, Kent?
Not Kent.
Okay, not Kent.
Not Hanover, not the stormwater management, not the broadband plan projects.
Do you want?
But Canaan, Rikers Ridge, DuPont, and Madison.
And that.
Jen, can I ask one more question, just in case I'm asked? Remind me the difference again, the stormwater management was allocated under section, what we have labeled as E, and then the revenue replacement, the stormwater management, the hundred and fifty thousand, and remind me, obviously that.
So, the city's going through a study right now to do their stormwater, whatever it's gonna take. So that, under E, is for, for them. The, under F, is for us to do our ordinance, get things, our infrastructure in place. Once again, I'm saying infrastructure, it's paper, it's the documentation, the ordinances that help us. When someone comes in and wants to build, alright, these are the things you're gonna have to do. You can't dump your water on your neighbor. Thou shalt not. But, so that's what, that's what the, under F, since it's kind of revenue replacement, it's all county stuff that we're gonna do. The stormwater management is what the Corps of Engineers is doing with the city.
And it's costing them four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. But they'll, they'll, they'll build a miniature and it's amazing, but still, it's very expensive.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor to do, to only include Kent, Hanover, stormwater management, and broadband, is that right, Gary? To be advertised. Do I have a second?
I'll second and see what the vote does.
Okay. Any other discussion before we take the vote? Everything else you wanna be tabled for any length of time?
Just till June.
Just till June?
Yeah.
All those in favor of tabling the, the others, but only, but if we go ahead and advertise, you're gonna do it for advertising only for, for Kent, Hanover, stormwater management, and broadband, and plant, and, and projects, correct? We have a second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Okay. Okay, back to the drawing board. We can still be discussing on, we can still discuss on this and everything because that was, that motion failed. Does anybody wanna make a motion that we go ahead with this amount?
I guess I'd just like to see, obviously, a lot of work has been put into this plan, so if there's questions that we have specifically and why we're questioning Rikers Ridge allocation, I feel like out of respect for the commissioners sitting here, we need to ask them these questions now. And if they don't have the data and documentation, then, then we can hold off, you know, for another month. If they need two more weeks to, you know, give us detail why they've come up with this number or that number. But, yeah, I guess I, I'm curious to know what all, what we're questioning.
You want the.
No, not necessarily, I mean.
If you have them, I'd like to have them, if not each one.
Sure, so Madison's got sixty-two hundred. Kent, Kent has two thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven. And once again, these are just Jefferson County.
Okay.
DuPont's got nine ninety-two. Canaan's got nine thirty-six. Rikers Ridge has eight thirty. And Hanover does not fit in that equation, it's, it's a thousand fifty. But once again, they asked for something, then we just set it up and.
What was Kent again, please?
Two thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven.
And the biggest discrepancy then with number of users for Kent and DuPont versus. Sorry. You're lighting that up.
Yeah, yeah, it's hard to light up. DuPont would have three hundred and seventy-five, DuPont would be a hundred and sixty, Canaan would be one fifty, and Rikers Ridge one thirty-five, and Hanover a hundred.
Got it.
You got it? It's hard, it's, there seems like a slip or something there. I, I think I draw lines. I'm drawing lines too, that's what I was thinking on it. Any further discussion on this? Do I have a motion that we send this to be voted on at the June meeting?
I'll motion.
Ray makes a motion, do I have a second?
I would second that we.
Okay, vote on.
Vote on this at the June meeting.
At the June meeting, okay. Do I have any other discussion before we vote on this? And that's the whole thing, right? That we vote on the whole, yes. Proposal, yes.
So in June, when we vote, we obviously would be giving a yea or nay to the subtotal under this header? I mean, we would not necessarily be voting on each entity?
Yes, we would have to be voting on each entity, and that's how it's split the debt. Receiving the particular dollars, yes. So, I have a motion on the floor that we have Heather advertise his full amount for two million, three hundred and twenty thousand at, for us to vote on in the June meeting. All those in favor? Three, four? All those opposed? Okay, four to three. So we will vote on that. Okay, the next one is negative economic impacts, nonprofits. That would be under B. True.
I know you can tell me for going back, just, when she said non-for-profit, just one quick question. The allocation for the, those matching grant funds that I even noted, I felt was wise, and that is for county proper grants that we will be applying for. This is not, the Big Brothers Big Sisters needs five thousand dollars for this and they, they need five thousand dollars to match. This is going, Jefferson County's applying for it.
Yeah, yeah.
That popped in my head and I forgot it, and obviously not for profit.
This is a discussion meeting, I, I think we can, we can do that, we can do that. Okay, going back to the, that would be B. On B, negative, negative economic impacts. That's like for your fire companies, uh, and nonprofits that we have down through there. So would you like to explain where, where, how you came up with those stuff, with the dollars to those?
So, um, those getting a hundred thousand are those out in the county, and then those in the city, and fifty for them. So that's how we came up with those figures. Kind of the three festivals that pretty much didn't have a way of raising funds in twenty twenty and things still deteriorated and fall, fall, were falling apart, so.
They didn't get to do anything in twenty or twenty-one, well, twenty-one they did, twenty-one, but not.
But, so the thought was, you know, there was some infrastructure projects and that's what that's for. It's not necessarily for putting in their bank account so they make it to next year. But, you know, for Chelsea, they sent us some electrical work that needs to be done in their property and so then.
Did the Cannonball Festival send you anything?
Um, well, they sent it to the Board of Tourism, but it's more in line with what we thought we could help them with, so we're looking at some of those projects. So they're still trying to decide whether they wanna own a stage or wanna rent a stage, and so they're trying to work through that, so. It may not be, you know, I don't, I don't know how much it's gonna be, but we figured that was a good limit and that would get them a long way to being able to keep.
Yeah, the stage you're looking at's thirty-seven thousand. It could be rented out to other festivals.
Correct, sure. And the Habitat for Humanity is at, for, for the house, or, or?
Yeah, about with the house, yeah.
With the house.
We're doing the six new houses behind the Reeve store, so.
Hanover.
Around State Highway.
State Highway.
The old State Highway was a, Restore, is that what it's called, Restore? Or Habitat, if you have any? I think there's one already built there, is that not correct?
I don't, the, the new.
I thought I saw one already built there.
They had a grand old.
Yeah, that's, that's on Green Road, but they're going back behind that roof and they've got like a cul-de-sac where they're, that they're gonna use. Said they're going to use, and this doesn't mean, sorry, Sears Stores.
Right, yes. We know where you're at. Yeah, we know, yeah. Yeah, yeah. I, I had another question. The, the, the county, you have a hundred thousand, the city do, are they not, the city fire companies? I'm not against giving the city fire companies money, but that's half of what they're giving to the county ones. The counties.
I'm open.
You know, I mean, I, 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 yeah, maybe I should step away from this because I, I, you know, I'm a farmer in the household.
As long as it doesn't end up on the Rikers Ridge line, I don't mind.
No, I think if, the, the reason I'm saying this is, you know, because the amount of trucks and the amount of equipment that each company has to have within the county, and I, I'm not a hundred percent sure, and somebody can correct me, I don't know how many trucks each of the city companies have. Do each, most of them just have one in each fire station? Am I, I don't know if somebody can, I'm thinking, I know that ones only have one and, and things, you know. But most of these other fire companies, the county fire company, you have a brush truck, and you have a tanker, and you have a, what's the other one? A pumper, a pumper that they have to have, and, and I know, I know that we share, that we can share, the, the county sometimes goes and helps the city with the pumpers and when they need more money and, and that direction. That was just my, my own personal comment was just that I thought, okay, I just thought that maybe, I, I, I was thinking.
Comment that they need less or they need more?
No, they would get, the city would get less, and the county would get, would pick up the difference.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the city pays a lot for their fire companies. In other words.
Yeah, they, they pay turnout gear.
They turn out gear.
And see, none of that is, I mean.
Oh, that's paid.
They have to have fish fries and chilies up.
That's why all the other small.
And I love all the downtown, because one of them drive across the street from me, but I'm saying that, I know that these other county townships, they, they suffer. And they're doing lots of fundraisers.
They don't even have enough, I think it is.
They don't have, uh, they don't have money in their bank account.
And they really struggled during COVID to even.
Yeah, to even keep doing, they couldn't do any of the fundraising things or anything during the COVID part, you know. And I think deputy, deputy, that, they, their trustees, there's not enough money even that they get from the trustees to hardly pay the insurance and stuff on their, their equipment.
Without insulting anyone, could we lower it down to twenty-five thousand and increase the, increase that amount to the county ones?
Spread it out to the others.
And I'm glad those who are not eliminated, I'm glad we are giving, I think, every single one of these.
Oh, I know, I, I'm not, I'm not taking it away.
Lost fundraising opportunities.
They all do.
Absolutely, that's what I want to help them.
Rikers Ridge will help the city, and vice versa. Kent, Hanover, anybody needs help, boom, they're there, so.
Right.
My feedback is that, I'm going to guess, their operating budgets are not the same, even for these that all look through the county, yet we've allocated a hundred thousand dollars for each. And obviously, if you look at the number of fires that Kent might respond to in their operating budget compared to Dupont's and their operating budget, I'm just a little fearful.
That some need.
Like the, the thought process put into the water allocation based on users, you know, I'm wondering, should there be more discrepancy in, in these? Based on their operating.
Based on the, the number of runs, the number of runs that they have to make.
I know Township had already done like a hundred and seventy-something, township.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like a hundred and seventy-something.
And I don't have a dog in the fight, so I just.
I, you know, I'm not saying that, I just know that what.
They actually beat my fire company out to Black Horse Bakery, so.
I, I'm not, I think, because they, the city will come and help. I mean, I'm not saying that we should, I'm like you, I don't want to eliminate, and I, I.
So don't take a cookie cutter approach to it, maybe put some.
Put some more thought into, a little bit more thought into this before, and then, and bring that back to us, maybe, I don't know. So that, yeah, and find out how many runs that each of the companies have, and base it a little bit more on the other.
Maybe we could start each fire company, each county fire company with a fifty thousand dollar base, and then take the remaining sum and split it out amongst the runs that they had in twenty twenty-one. And that way, the ones that are more active are going to get more money, and the ones that are a little less active would get a little less money.
Within the county.
Within the county.
Within the county, and then take the city down to what, twenty-five, to like a twenty-five deal or whatever?
Wouldn't it be fair to look at just twenty twenty-one, though?
Well, I mean, you could look at a running sum over two or three years, but just looking for some basis to say, these are the number of runs that each fire company made, because obviously Township.
I know those.
They're everywhere.
I know.
You know, and thankfully, the stormwonders out there, they're not used as much, because they're a little more rural, but we want to make sure all of them have operating funds.
Absolutely.
To make it proportionate to the number of runs and to help cover their costs just makes sense.
Exactly.
That's a great idea.
You know, I would like to see it tabled, until, until you can get some better figures on that, on that type of thing.
Who's going to, who's going to give us those figures?
I was going to say, is there something?
Your fire chiefs, your fire chiefs in each one should have, they should have a record, each company should have a record of how many runs they have made every year. They have to send all that to the state.
Would you like for me to have them on behalf of you two?
Yeah, you know, that, the state, they have to send all that to the state every year, that, you know, I mean, so they should have paperwork somewhere, you know, that would have that.
Would the last two years be sufficient?
Yeah, what do you want? I mean, what year?
Because you're looking at a COVID year. I think you should go back.
Three, go three years.
Yeah, go three, go back a year.
Or some care about COVID ago.
No, and you know, I think, yeah, I think COVID year, they, they had a lot of them, you know.
Staying home was more chance of fire.
That's, I think, I think they had a lot of them, yeah, I think, but I think you should go back to say maybe nineteen, and, and the twenty, and the, and the twenty-one, you know, those kind of.
Commissioners, would you like for me to gather that information?
Yep.
Okay.
The three factors, Ray, and these might just be suggestive questions. I was curious about number of runs, what their operating budget is, and then loss of dollars. You know, for this fire company, you say, we couldn't have our two fundraisers, and it cost us thirteen thousand dollars that we only bring in, and this, but this, you know, fire company says, we lost forty thousand dollars in loss of fundraisers this past year. Those, those kind of were the three things that popped into my head, that I, I wondered if we could factor that in for, for the city and the counties.
I think those would be proportionate, because your, your fire companies that are making the more calls, they're, they're running more fundraisers.
Yeah.
And then, I think it kind of trickles back.
Well, I think it trickles back too, and, 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 and just like the price of fuel and the price of anything, and the problem with the fire companies, and I know it is with all of them, the city too, that your equipment, I mean, your, your, what they wear, the clothes that they wear, and the, and the stuff for going into fires, they're only good for a certain length of time, and then they are not, they, the insurance won't cover them any longer, or anything, you know, if they use equipment, that type of equipment, if something gets, if somebody hurts, I, you know, I just think we should be a little more steady. Though, however, with that said, on the fire companies, boys, then, I'm not opposed to going ahead with Neville's Grove and Chelsea and the Canons, and, and the Habitat, so forth, that direction. So that's just my.
So you're making a motion?
Before that motion's made, just curious what the process for the other line item, so many wonderful nonprofits in this community that also lost revenue with, with not being able to have fundraisers. How, and some of them are already in our existing yearly budget for this year. How, not that you guys today have a detailed plan in place of how we're going to ask folks to, are we, is this kind of a wait till they ask, and?
No, I don't think it's that, but I think we need to come up with some, at least some guidelines.
Is that what the others call, but you have others here for two hundred thousand, so that's what that is in too, okay, yeah.
So I think, we talked about putting together some guidelines, I haven't, I don't know if you guys have yet, but, you know, just, I know you had mentioned that there were some guidelines in certain grand cycles that you didn't like, so we need to look at those, but just to see.
Let me, I can put some thought to that, and happy to, I just, and I, I don't think that numbers are that store inappropriate. I think it's, there's a lot of people that need and ask for those monies.
And actually, Sarah, you sent out to us today, I thought I printed that off, you sent out a thing that the, for the nonprofits that are asking that, that.
Or regular.
Already regular come to us. Is that something that could be used for this man or two?
Well, I think it's a start.
It's a start.
But I think we want some.
A little more information you have to.
I think we put some, some more guidelines on there.
You know, that direction, so, yeah, I think so too. So, you know, but as far as like the Neville's Grove and Chelsea and Canaan, do we have comments on those? Where they would, we could go ahead and for those to be advertised, and the nonprofits, and the Habitat, and others? What are we thinking? Or do we want to throw it all out?
I'll make sure to go ahead and advertise those.
That for those, for the Neville's Grove, Chelsea, Canaan, the nonprofits, the Habitat for Humanity, and other.
I knew Chelsea had, had asked about some lighting.
Yeah, and stuff, and that way they can get that sort of stuff done, you know, some of those things done, because these festivals are coming, you know, these festivals are coming.
They're on the fence, like, okay, are we going to do it now, or are you going to?
So I have a motion for Ray to go ahead and do the bottom portion of that, because that'd be fifteen thousand dollars each for the, for Neville's Grove, Chelsea, and Canaan. The nonprofit is thirty thousand for Habitat, Habitat, and then two hundred thousand for other. So, do I have a second?
Awesome.
Okay, you got a second? All those in favor of that part for her to advertise? Okay.
Okay. Do we motion, do we motion to table this?
Do what? Oh, do we need a motion to table the rest of this? We probably.
Nobody did that yet, so.
We haven't done that yet?
We haven't done it so far.
Okay, I need a motion to table the other portion of the negative economic impact.
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor of that? Okay, let's table.
I certainly hope false rumors aren't, aren't going to be spread that the fire companies don't think that.
Oh, I know, I know.
Don't want to give them their support.
Oh, we do, we just want it, we just want to look at it a little bit better.
Appropriated it correctly.
As the image, maybe not a cookie cutter exact numbers for each department, but help, put a little more thought into that.
Okay, public health, public health is that, because there wasn't money on that one.
Mm-hmm.
Huh? Okay, and then the bottom one, the, the G is administration, twenty thousand, and Barnes and, do we, we need to?
We've already taken.
Isn't that the one we just did tonight? Okay, it's already done, so.
It's already done.
Okay, so is there anything else on that? Uh, okay, okay, now, public comment. Anybody have a public comment on what was discussed under these things? Josh?
Just a quick question. What was Dupont's number again? I didn't get it wrote down.
Dupont's number was a hundred thousand.
Dupont.
Oh, oh, you mean, for the.
Nine ninety-two.
Nine, oh, water, nine ninety-two, I'm sorry. For the water, nine ninety-two. Is that what you're wanting?
That was customers, so.
Customers.
Yeah, no, I wanted the dollar.
Hundred and sixty?
Hundred and sixty, okay. That's all it needed.
So any other public comment or ask?
I would, if I can. I've never seen a greater, underutilized asset in my years in government, business, and in Jefferson County, than is represented by Jefferson Prue again. Never. And I have been at an assignment on behalf of all the residents of Jefferson County for many years. First, while the idea of how we go about, as a state, creating regional efforts, and their, the prior governor, I was a consultant among those who helped create the idea, and then I've been honored by this council. Commissioners who picked me in this council had the vision, and I want to frankly thank you, all of you, for placing Jefferson County in this position, because the previous round, Harrison County was in, and we were not. There's a five-county limit on this opportunity, which is enormous, generational opportunity, and we didn't get it the first time, we got it the second time. So I'm grateful to all of you for making that very wise decision that you made as a county council when you decided that Jefferson County would be a part of this. We are part of a regional economy, and I think, just watching this over time and participating enthusiastically on behalf of Jefferson County. So I'm one of five voting members on the board, and we have to think regionally, but we also are passionate locally, right? So we have, you know, we have to wear both hats. And I also have a background in defense. I worked at the Pentagon, and after, after that, have been a passionate advocate for Indiana's role in defense development and its participation. And I think we, regionally and in Jefferson County particularly, have an underutilized opportunity to play ball in that arena. And that's just one potential element of where we could fit reuse of Jefferson County, and particularly the airfield, going forward. I think minus a study, which gives us the tool essentially to pitch what we have to a variety of funding sources, we don't have anything to sell. And so, in my view, I would really encourage you to think about the big opportunity here. It's a regional opportunity, frankly, it's a national opportunity for us to play ball nationally, I think, in a number of ways. I think the private sector play here is big. We don't have to compete with any other little airfield, and I, I have great respect for all the small airfields. But I mean that in the sense that this is not competition with other public airfields. This is an opportunity to use an asset that is unique, and has, I think, airspace above and around it that is rare. And I happen to know this just because of my background, and I probably will stop there before I get myself in trouble. So I, I really think we have something here, and that's all I'm going to say. Thanks.
Thanks, Kevin. Any other public comment? Anybody else here that would like, wanted to agree on anything, or anything else? Katie, did you have anything? Right, don't, okay. How about the commissioners? Any other comments or, you know, discussion on any of this sort of stuff tonight, please? Go ahead.
Okay, our building, the EMA building, we have looked at the building, I think it's been talked about a little bit, there's certain things.
Each one was, each one of the council was a call, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, so we're working on that, and we've got something that's almost a no-brainer, but, yeah, needs to be, I don't know how, I don't know how we go about discussing that, because we are sworn.
The settlers want it to remain confidential until.
They need confidentially, until we know where we are.
It's my understanding that if this body allocated a small amount of money for.
Burns money.
Yes, thank you.
Like we have done when we did on this building, and we did on the, on the jail, yeah.
Then the seller would know that we are serious about that building, meeting our needs, you know, final details can be sought and obtained with, you know, inspection process and, you know, appraisals, et cetera, and commissioners incurring that, you know, that may be the best use of dollars for additional storage for Jefferson County. Then we could still even be on a timeline to have a decision made and/or purchase made prior to when our current lease or, or rent is up with the forage fairgrounds. That would keep us, not till October, I think, end of September.
It goes, runs through the end of September, is what has been funded right now in our budget. I mean, if, if we have, if we have going forward, it would happen, we have.
The sins of dollars.
But we could do it month by month, can't we?
We're still doing it month, we are right now doing it month by month, but, but what was budgeted in the EMA and budget will only run, will run out in the end of September.
In September.
End, end of September. So yes, we could still vote to include another month or whatever it was on the thing, you know, that direction.
Is that understanding? Is that, am I on the right?
Yeah, basically, the owners want to know how committed we were, and then, should it happen, they can approach their tenants and let.
And go from there.
Yeah, not so it's just hearsay, somebody on the street, oh, didn't know you, you know, so.
Can I make a recommendation of size?
Yes.
Okay. Rainy day, I had made an error and actually appropriated money there, so there is money appropriated there that you guys voted on last time?
Mm-hmm.
That you guys could use for something, we would not have to advertise for that.
We would not have to advertise that, so we could put down.
Potentially make a motion and do that.
Make a motion to that factor, and I'm thinking, thinking back on lawyers' one step, that five thousand dollars was what we used for this building, and I think.
I thought that was fifty thousand was my.
Fifty.
That was fifty for this building, not for this building?
Fifty for the jail.
For the jail, for the, for the jail building, for the jail part, but not for this, when we, when we purchased this. No, we had, we had a five thousand dollars. We had a five thousand dollar hold on that, so, so that we could discuss, because I remember when we signed that. Because I remember when we signed, that came off, you know, the five thousand dollars came off of what we paid for it, you know, and everything.
Of course, it's a little different situation too.
Yeah, the jail was a little bit different because that was a big amount, but yes, you are, you are correct on the, on the other. So is this something that the council, since you've all been spoken to about it and everything, is this something that we want the commissioners continue to do? And if so.
I make a motion.
That we put earnest money of at least five thousand down with, with what needs to be.
I'll second that.
Okay, and Ray, second it?
Along with, with, has there been a building inspection done? I know the building and it appears well, but, you know, you're not, you never buy anything without checking it out first, so.
But I think that's something that with.
That's what I'm making sure that we're doing between this.
That would all go hand, you know, it wouldn't be just here it are.
I know.
I understand where you're coming from, good, good idea.
Sometimes people get excited and they get ahead of themselves.
I think there actually, I think there had not been, it would need a recent appraisal, but I believe a recent inspection actually was done. I can verify that, that that was part of a discussion that I had. I think there has been, because it was extremely lengthy and detailed and impressive and.
But that could be, that could be checked on.
Recent inspection done?
Of, not, 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 nothing I'm aware of, there's been extensive renovations, but I'm not aware of the official inspection.
But we can look into that if we put this earnest money down and go from that.
You can be a contingency on anything you want.
Okay.
I, I'm sure residents have been contacted, I like what I've heard so far.
Yeah, I, I did too, so the motions on the floor that we use.
Contingency that passes the inspection.
Exactly, exactly, on those contingencies, so we can use it.
Of knowing this is actually, will ultimately be cost savings for the county compared to building our own building and we would be able to get into that space most likely quicker as well, savings of rent money for our current storage compared to building and, and still looking at some zoning issues in general, so. I just want to make sure that's noted in minutes and.
My other little question is that, because we're not, we're in a, this meeting, so we can do it at this meeting because the commissioners are involved in this, is that correct, so we can make this motion?
I believe so, and since it is tied to one of the projects.
Projects, okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor, all those in favor of using the rainy day money? And I would say whatever, whatever the five thousand or whatever it is to do that, to continue searching and taking care of that and going from there. Troy, are you there?
Yes, ma'am. No, he's on the floor.
You're hiding on the floor, on that, on that, on that. And we're sorry, we cannot go any farther with that, that. Once we find out, we, we got to go to the next step, so. Anything else, anyone else from the audience, anyone else on the?
We're going to vote.
Huh?
We're going to vote.
Thought we just did. Ray, did we miss that, did we not vote?
Right, vote.
Okay, did you want to vote for it or against it?
I thought it was okay.
You didn't, you didn't formally announce it, I couldn't see.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah. The motion, it passed, so I guess everyone was in favor of it, so.
We want to do, we had to make sure.
Well, we did.
Now Judy wants a reading, let her have a word.
Slice it through.
Well, I don't think, and the commissioners have to do it on their part too, I guess, whatever.
At their next meeting.
At their next meeting, they would have to do it, you know, and everything that direction, so. I guess, I don't know, can they do it at this meeting?
And this is a joint meeting.
This is a joint meeting, I don't know why they couldn't.
Who put the brusher on? Fly at you, good job.
Well, I mean, you know.
I like it, you're doing good.
I need a motion, right?
Yes.
Yes, you do.
I'll make a motion that we, I don't want to do this.
We don't have a charge.
You're earning money.
Since the council has.
You're fifteen bucks.
Buy a couple birders.
We would put five thousand dollars, good earnest money, on said structure contingent on passing inspection and whatever else needs to be done.
I second that. Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Carries. We almost had that.
He gives you more time than I do, yes. I'm sorry.
That's the shortest meeting yet.
It's six oh one, right?
Yeah. Sarah or Heather, is there anything else that needs to be grown up for that?
Um, would you like me to schedule the next meeting with hours? Or do you guys want to do the last commissioners meeting?
Schedule a meeting for any.
Of the month?
For any area that needs further discussion. So, because the rest of this, because this is going to have to come back up again under a separate meeting, all this sort of thing.
So we have been going back and forth, going you guys hosting, commissioners hosting. So would you guys like to go to the last commissioner meeting in June?
In June, what, May the?
Twenty.
Twenty third.
Third, it'll be after hours, but to discuss.
One day of the week.
Those are serving cocktails, we're doing.
Those personnel will be out of town and work.
Okay, so, or if it works better to have it at our next meeting, our next meeting is the fourteenth of June.
Which is better for the commissioner.
June second and June twenty-third.
Does June second enough time to get some of the information?
Information that you need, which you'd rather, if we, at our reading, that we have it and everything and we can allow you to control that meeting? Well, we're going to be partners here, Dave.
I've seen where you would go. You don't vote, I can't write you. I don't think, I mean, I have, I have a graduation, I have a wedding, so I don't think I can get ready by the second.
Might be easier if we.
If we do it at our next meeting.
We'll have three to have two instead of up, at least about.
Well, that, or we could do it at their meeting on the fourteenth.
It doesn't matter, does it?
It's not going to be long with what we've got left, so.
Okay, I will just add an advertisement on the fourteenth.
Okay, that'll be our next, that'll be our next meeting, okay. So for June, for June the twen, uh, June the fourteenth, right? That way. Okay, anything else?
I make a motion to a juror?
Second.
Okay. Over to you.